Mark.
I'm here.
Krista? Eric?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Oscar?
Yes, ma'am.
The approval of the agenda, um, the only thing on the, we're that training to just talk about the bylaws.
Are the mics on?
Uh.
You can sit here. I can sit here. Um, so would you say then, just put them by there. And if you can help. Um, would you entertain motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the.
We approve the, um, minutes of the.
No, just the, the agenda.
Oh. Agenda, I'm sorry.
Motion by Mark.
I'll second it.
Oscar seconded it to approve the agenda with the addition of on eleven to just a discussion on the bylaw. If you don't have that in there, I guess, um, the minutes. You don't have that in there.
On the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. Number five.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll go to new business, uh, member additions. We've got Chris. Okay. And you just tell us a little bit about what you do with it.
Um, I'm a real estate agent.
Okay.
I've been in development, real estate for twenty-five years.
Okay. Good, and we have Eric Breckenridge.
Yeah, um, Eric Breckenridge, hello. I am the Director of Digital Strategy and Experience at Meredith Credit Union, serving Credit Union for over two decades. And I live over at K two fifty-four in Rock Road in the Heritage Hills, um, area. Um, I'm in five years living in Heritage September.
Are your mics on? Are the mics on?
Oh, you gotta push the button to.
Thank you.
To, so when you speak, push the button, then you turn it back off. Push it again. All right, so sorry about that, um, and we had a, since the last meeting, we had two member additions, uh, Chris Moreland and, uh, Lucas Kirk. Uh, C is, uh, it's time, according to the bylaws, uh, in May, we're supposed to do the, uh, election of officers. So looking for chairman and vice chairman. I guess I'll do one more here, tell it.
I nominate, um, I'll put the push the button over there. I nominate which will, uh, continue as the chairperson for the, uh, planning commission.
I'll second.
And nominate, uh, Mark for vice chair?
I'm, yeah, I'll second.
All right, uh. So. Have the, uh. Motion for proof, the nomination. The.
I second.
Yeah, second. Okay, Chris seconds. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we have the new, we're the same vice chair. Uh, review of capital improvement for for this who see with comprehensive plan. Assume that's. Is that you, Justin?
Yeah, that's the, uh, the Excel or the sheet with a bunch of numbers on it here.
Okay.
Uh, capital improvement program for twenty twenty-four throughout twenty twenty-eight. Um, we just need for you guys to look at it, make sure that it goes along with the comprehensive plan for the city of Keichai. The improvements are going where they need to go.
I can speak on that just briefly too, if you don't mind. So as part of the annual budget, um, I don't think you guys have done this in the past, but the planning commission is supposed to approve the CIP, uh, capital improvement plan for the city, um, just to make sure it's in line with the comprehensive plan that is developed and approved by the planning commission. The specific items in the CIP this year would be strategic plan number three. Uh, we're currently working on strate- getting ready to work on strategic plan number two, uh, which has to do with land use as part of the comprehensive plan. Uh, of course parks, uh, which is part of the comprehensive plan, the city's putting some additional money towards parks this year, a little over sixty-seven thousand dollars. And then, uh, several street upgrades, uh, which of course has somewhat to do with the comprehensive plan and it's, uh, maintaining infrastructure and roadways and all that stuff. So, uh, part of it is just transparency, um, procedure that the planning commission is supposed to approve and make sure that the divisions of the comprehensive plan are aligning with what the city's doing, so.
You know, looking for motion today, you're looking for.
Yeah.
You put over.
No, we need the motion today.
Okay. What is it? Court, uh, Tyler Tech, what was it?
So the rest of the things on there that I did not highlight are operational things within the city that really don't have to do with the comprehensive plan. Uh, the type, Tyler Tech is a module of our financial system that has to do with courts, it's part of the accounting software, just what that is.
What's the, what are you gonna do with the sewers for this year, is it?
Sewer rehabbing the sewers, getting ready.
Re- relining?
Relining, I'm correct, getting ready to start that process, yeah.
Okay. And will the sewers be, since it kind of affects me, will they still be, I mean, you won't shut them down or anything?
The sewer, the sewer is in this year's budget, not for twenty twenty-five.
Right.
Yeah.
But I was just.
No, no, as far as shutting them down, no, they go in and reline them in place, I don't, I don't know if there's any way to shut sewers down, that's not a good question for me, but I don't think it would be a good idea.
No, all righty. Well, the entertaining motion to approve the CIP.
I saw a blue approval. Second.
Uh, motion by Oscar seconded by Mark to approve the CIP for twenty twenty-five. On favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, now we're up to approving the minutes from May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Have you read through those, it looks, looked good to me, anybody? I saw blue approval. Yeah. Motion by Oscar seconded by Chris to approve the minutes from May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. On favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, is anybody here, uh, to speak at the public forum, or is it just?
We have four of them.
Huh? We have four of them.
Four, okay.
Four, four people want to speak at the public forum.
Okay, go ahead.
Yep.
Who do you got?
Jenny Harris. Jenny Harris, one oh nine West Chippewa Street, planning commission members. Tonight, I bring forward a few additional points to consider regarding the conditional use permit, case CU dash two zero, two four dash zero three, the liquor store at two hundred east Keichai Road. After hearing more from the applicant at the May twenty twenty-four hearing, number one, when my husband and I moved to Keichai two years ago, we actually thought Valley Floral was out of business due to the exterior condition of the property. It was a surprise to learn it was in operation and had expanded from wholesale only to now include retail sales. The applicant and owner of Valley Floral indicated that the proposed property development before you would be beautifully landscaped should he be granted his conditional use permit. However, his existing business does not give evidence to that fact. Number two, Valley Floral of Keichai was originally opened as a wholesale operation, just a few years ago, Mr. Ramos, the current owner, decided to expand to retail sales. The original parking requirements would reflect the wholesale nature of the business, likely very few cars. Has the zoning department or the planning commission required the appropriate parking for a retail greenhouse operation to be considered or updated? And if more parking is required, where would that parking be located? And how will you handle parking for the plant events that are hosted, um, by Valley Floral, who currently utilizes the Oliver property that is undeveloped? When the event attendees use upper parking and that property has been purchased and is planned to be developed? Number three, the applicant was quite forward at the May hearing stating because only eight residents showed up for the hearing, but the other twenty-three hundred residents in Keichai supported the first store. That is a bold statement to make on behalf of those twenty-three hundred people. Usually, business owners in a small town desire resident support, but this statement that he made does not lead us to believe the applicant is truly for building up the Keichai community. Number four, as a resident, I am concerned that the May twenty twenty-four hearing for this case was attended by only two planning commission members who are in attendance tonight, and the other three commissioners were not able to attend that hearing to hear the full context. Therefore, I make a request, if it's possible, to hold a new hearing, that those making this conditional use permit decision are involved in the hearing and not just relying on city staff information and the minutes that are recorded. And number five, finally, if the planning commission should decide to recommend the approval of the conditional use permit, I ask that you protect the Keichai residents and require a condition that the store size is limited to the drawing size included with the application and the hours of operation are limited. Mr. Ramos has no requirement to build a coffee ice cream shop if granted the conditional use permit. The character of the liquor store is still, in our, my opinion, not compatible with the vision of a walkable arts and business district. Thank you.
Jenny, can I have that?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Who are you going now? Your words.
Pam and Todd Gerhart.
Okay.
We can do it, come on.
Please state your name and address.
Officer left behind. Pam Gerhart, three oh two East Cheyenne Court. All right, we are not in favor of Ella Christa. Um, the boardwalk and shops were demolished, we know, in twenty-eleven, research, and I remember that was a really big thing, it was a big thing, I lived in West Wichita at that time, Todd lived here, had built a home in nineteen ninety-nine. And Keichai's always been known as an artisan community, always. In twenty fifteen, I looked, I know that there is the strategic plan that's in there, but I looked up on the Art Valley News this year for the last time, that we should be subscribed to that. I mean, in twenty fifteen, there was an article published, and this is what it was quoted, called, the, the strategic plan states how residents express their vision for a vibrant downtown arts and business district, uh, in the heart of the city. Originally, uh, original graphic, uh, renditions, crafted elements, which will expand downtown opportunities for artisan, crackers, and different types of small businesses. And here we are now ten years later, and nothing's been done. In fact, this summer, we lost two vital businesses, the quilt, the Keichai, uh, uh, quilt shop and, uh, the vintage, uh, vintage rhinestone. You know. There hasn't been anything done with the strategic plan. So here we are, uh, and we need businesses and we need shops. People still talk about Keichai and coming to Keichai, but what are they coming for? There's not, we go to Card, and I'm so proud to be there, I used to live, like I said, in West Wichita, and when we, I knew we were gonna come to, to Keichai, my husband built, I had remarried, and we're coming here, I was so excited. But I don't know what's here anymore. I used to give my, I used to sell my wares at the boardwalk in one of the little shops, so I know what was here before. I wasn't a resident then, I'm proud to be a resident of Keichai, but I'm not proud to have a liquor store as one of our main businesses, especially on the board, on the boardwalk. Uh, we don't need a liquor store, um, we, it only fits the art and business district, um, in the strategic plan, it says there that it's for artisans, crackers, and different types of, of small businesses. And a liquor store simply does not fit in the strategic plan. What we'd like to see, what I'd like to see is an art collective, and where everybody comes together and learns, we have so much, you go to Pahaska, and there are little shops that have all come in.
Way to.
That's a, and Waygo's another one, that you go and, yes, those are people that invest in money, but I think people would come if we had something worthwhile. And they're not gonna come for a liquor store, they can go down to Park City to go to a liquor store. So those are just our thoughts, we say no to a liquor store. No?
Hi, my name's Todd Gerhart, live at three oh two Cheyenne Court. Been here since ninety-nine, and, um, again, I'm not thrilled with the prospect of a beer one, another beer one liquor store here in Keichai. We have one that, we had one that I can remember, uh, up on sixty-first, closer to Woodlawn, where that little strip mall is for a short period, it just didn't make it. And I think if we're gonna expel the resources for something like this, develop the land, it should be for something that stands a good chance of, of, uh, prevailing. And, um, um, that area, as my wife mentioned, was an arts and crafts area, it would be so awesome to see something like that put in place again. We've got a few incredible businesses here, we've got a beautiful woodworking shop that does custom work, and we've got, of course, Card, and it would be great to just continue to build on that. And kind of build Keichai into, um, well, kind of like, um, um, a mini, um, silver dollar city area, you know, Branson, Missouri, the way they, they've built up. But, um, I'm a little concerned about what that could attract, um, to our area. Of course, we've got a casino now up north, uh, up north of, uh, Park City, it's part of the Park City. And, um, one of our residents here, he owns the rental area over here, just, um, on sixty-first, had a corner from the post office. Got up one morning a while ago, and there was a man standing in his backyard, now he lives on north of Woodlawn and off a dirt road, you'd think he would be out of a beaten path, and the guy was just standing there. He asked him, what are you doing here? He said, I don't know, how did you get here? I don't know. And come to found out, the guy has problem with substance addiction, substance abuse, in this case alcohol, but at any rate. The guy wanted a ride, so he called the sheriff's officer and gave him a ride, talked to the sheriff's officer, and the sheriff's officer said someone had opened up, uh, a hotel up here for very low rate, like thirty or forty bucks a night. And that some of the undocumented residents here in the Wichita area were staying there, going to the casino, and then they stagger, I've seen them up here on sixty-first street, outside of Keichai, over by, um, all the property that we just, just got sold. Thin Place, I think is what it's called, just standing there in the ditch with a bunch of stuff. I'm, I'm concerned this would attract those people that have addictive personalities, it's convenient for them, they can go to Park City, but at any rate, thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you.
Debbie. Debbie Hart, five thirty morning, pretty creeped out. I've been a resident of Keichai since two thousand, so I remember when the boardwalk was actually full of antique little shops. That's what I feel like the culture of Keichai is all about, not a liquor store. There is a liquor store less than two miles away in Park City, if somebody needs alcohol, two miles, that's it, or you've got the gas station. I don't feel that building a liquor store there fits in with the art district vibe that Keichai is wanting to create, and I don't see how that fits in. I'm not gonna talk all these other points, there hasn't been anything that other people have said tonight that I disagree with, so I am very much opposed to this, thank you.
Thank you.
Is it George Elder?
Evening, everyone, evening, Eston. Um, I just wanted to come by, actually wasn't coming for the liquor store, um, conversation, but in the weeks, months to come, we'll be sending some documentation, talking to Eston about, uh, our creamery buildings. Some of you may be aware that we closed our creamery and dairy operations and intend or hope to, uh, reimagine that building, we put a lot into it, we're very considered with the aesthetics, and the material choices and the woodworking that was there. And hope to make it an asset to our business in a different sense, so we'll be proposing and moving ideas back and forth about conversion to a residential. Um, whether it's, uh, one, the need for my parents to have a larger house, um, but also probably some, uh, vacation type rentals for people who come to our restaurant, or spend time coming to pick blackberries in the summer. So just wanted to come by and note that, so that as you see documents and send stuff through, um, it's not a cold call, so I look forward to the process.
Thank you, please.
Did I hit? We will move on.
Oh, just a second, I started mine.
You got one more?
Yeah, Mary. Hi, I'm Mary Buffalo, twenty-five twenty-five, East Ninety-third Street North, so I'm up in the north end of Keichai. Um, we've lived there for probably thirty years, uh, and I do have another home here right on Oliver at one thirty-one South Oliver, and I've always been really excited at the vision that was presented, uh, for the Arts and Business District, which did prompt me to buy a, a family friend's home. And, you know, look forward to it becoming more shops. Now, I have known Carlos for fifteen to twenty years through the professional, you know, cut flower business, and, you know, Carlos and I are, are friends. But I'm here to say that I also don't really see that particular area as a liquor store, um, and I just, brainstorming, I see things like a coffee shop, a bakery, a little restaurant, a bicycle shop. I passed three bicyclists on my way here from north Keichai, um, you know, like something upscale or, or craftsmanship. Um, and I have nothing against liquor, I do remember the liquor store that was out, uh, towards Woodlawn, and it, I don't know that it lasted more than a couple of years. Because everyone from Keichai seems to be coming home from somewhere else, they probably pass numerous liquor stores on their way home, or, you know, buy liquor, buy liquor from a liquor store close to where they shop for groceries. I found that there are probably about six liquor stores within a six mile radius of Keichai, so it's not something that's desperately needed. So my recommendation is to, to, before you, you know, do something that may change the downtown feel, I know that there was still a lot of hard feelings and hardship about the social tap, and I know that it's one of the things a lot of Keichai residents really do enjoy. Um, so there's lots of, I actually took a trip past the area, I mean, I'm through Keichai a lot, there's still a lot of residents around that area. But one thing I would also recommend, I know that Carlos has, you know, a green thumb, what about a garden center? I mean, I think that's something that everyone in Keichai, a full-fledged garden center with all the beautiful plants, all the things that you would need. So I just wanna say that I think that there's probably a higher expectation for something that is so close to the downtown arts and business district. I would like to see something a little more with that Keichai feel, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. That's right, okay. Uh, and now call agenda item seven A, public hearing for case number CU dash twenty twenty-four dash zero six, request for a conditional use to allow an oversight of storage shed or structure workshop in R one single-family residential district. Uh, I'll ask if, uh, does any member of the planning commission wish to stay and come voting on this agenda later? Let the record show there were no abstentions, we have a forum of, uh, five. Uh, commissioners, press request for the public hearing. Uh, planning commissioners are required to report the general nature of any verbal or written expertise communications received prior to this meeting. However, it's not necessary to disclose the names of parties. Does, and we're talking about, if you receive any information from the, the bias, see one way or the other. Does any member of the planning commission wish to report expertise communication? Let the record show that no expertise communications have been reported. The secretary has reported that a notice for a hearing was published in Art Valley News on five sixteen twenty twenty-four, which is at least twenty days advanced notice as required to property owner and surrounding property owners. Were also notified by letter at least twenty days prior to this hearing. Therefore, I declare notification requirements have been satisfied for this public hearing. I will now ask Dustin Dalton to present a brief case report and recommendations.
Thank you, commissioners. All right, uh, CU dash twenty twenty-four dash zero six, Richard and Jema Harbor, requesting a conditional use to allow a storage shed or structure that exceeds its size limits for properties zoned as an R one single-family residential district. Here we see a map of where the property is at, it's on Kodiak Street. The applicants are requesting a conditional use to construct a storage shed or structure that exceeds maximum gross floor area, seven hundred twenty square feet for properties over ten thousand square feet, but no more than three acres. The property is generally located east of Oliver, on the north side of Kodiak Street, or one fifty east Kodiak Street, and is zoned R one single-family residential district. Property is plotted as lot six, block two, Northwoods addition, and developed with a single-family residence. The storage shed or structure is intended to be used as a workshop slash woodshop. The storage shed or structure is defined in the Keichai zoning regulations as a permanent or temporary structure used for general storage of personal items, including vehicle storage, when required access surfacing is provided to the right way. The applicants are planning on the storage shed or structure workshop to be twenty-six by thirty-two feet, or eight hundred thirty-two square feet, which is a hundred and twelve square feet over the maximum permitted by section ten point four five of the zoning regulations. Keichai zoning regulations state, except as approved by conditional use, maximum gross floor area shall be as follows, lots over ten thousand square feet in area, but not more than three acres, seven hundred and twenty square feet total between no more than three structures. The property currently has no other accessory structures, approval of this request would allow the applicants to construct a storage shed or s- structure workshop as proposed. The subject site was plotted as lot six, block two of Northwoods addition in two thousand and five, there have been no zoning actions on this property. Jason's zoning and land use to the north, south, east, and west is all zoned as R one, all of whom are developed as single-family residential, except to the north, it is undeveloped. Kodiak Street is a paved local road and all public services are available and provided to the property. The requested conditional use is in conformance with Keichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan, context-sensitive development helps preserve and enhance both the function and aesthetics of adjacent features. See recommendation number one below. Based upon information available prior to the public hearings, planning staff recommends that the request be approved, subject to the following conditions. Storage shed or structure workshop must comply with the specific use standards of section ten point four five. Development and main, maintenance of the site shall be in conformance with the approved site plan, no hazardous waste or materials shall be stored in excess of regular household use. in the storage shed or structure workshop. If the zoning administrator finds that there is a violation of any of the conditions of the conditional use, the zoning administrator, in addition to enforcing the other remedies set forth in the zoning regulations, may declare that the conditional use is null and void. Recommendation is based upon the following findings. The properties to the east, southwest are zoned and developed as R-one single-family. Property to the north is zoned as R-one and undeveloped. Number two, the request for a conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan as discussed in the staff report. Number three, all utilities and public services are provided to the area. Staff do not anticipate an increase in public utilities or services due to the proposed garage, excuse me, workshop. Four, the subject site is currently zoned R-one single-family residential district, which permits a storage shed or structure workshop that exceeds the maximum gross floor area by conditional use approval. The property is approximately nineteen thousand seventy-one square feet and has a maximum lot coverage of thirty-five percent or six thousand six hundred seventy-four square feet. The primary residence on the property has a lot coverage of about seven point one percent. The addition of a detached, uh, I don't know why it says carport or garage, but it will say storage shed or structure workshop would make the total lot coverage about eleven point five percent. The property is not vacant. It was developed with a single-family residence in two thousand and eleven. Staff does not see an issue with R-one single-family residential district with an oversized shed or structure workshop being adjacent to other R-one single-family residential, uh, properties. Number seven, staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. Eight, approval of this application is not anticipated to have significant detrimental impacts to the public health, safety, or welfare. Denial of this application could represent a loss and abuse of enjoyment of the applicant's property. No input, positive or negative, has been received from the public at the time of staff report. Here we see an aerial map of the property. This is the zoning map showing that all adjacent is zoned as R-one, single-family. On the future development plan map from the twenty forty comprehensive plan shows the location of the property. Here's a site plan from the owner. North is going to be to your left. On this, uh, map here, it is away from the house. It's behind it. It is away from the property line and twenty feet away from the rear property line, fifteen away from the side property line. This is what it's going to look like comparatively. Cedar posts. Front view. Side. Top view. And site photos. Northeast, south, and west. Does anyone have any questions for me? Yes, sir.
Uh, is there any p- a plan by the applicant to have, uh, uh, water and sewer?
Not that I have heard. He has not said, uh, anything about water or sewer, but just electrical to run all the equipment. Yes.
Any other questions for Dustin?
Is it?
Thank you.
Nope.
Do you have one?
Um, do the covenants restrict that? Their covenants?
I've spoke with the, I want to say somebody on the HOA or the president, I'm not sure. Um, nothing in their bylaws, I was told, affects it. They did check with me to make sure that it was within, um, it, it was allowed on the property. So I have not heard anything that says that it is not allowed by HOA standards.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dustin.
Yep.
Is the applicant here or missed it?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, I will now open the public hearing. Uh, anybody wish to just have any discussion on this? Okay, uh, hearing, no further, uh, comments. I hereby close the public hearing. The, uh, planning commission, uh, will now begin deliberations. There will be no further public input unless the planning commission adds the clarification of the reported comment. Um, so, yeah, do you have any, anything you wanted to add or do what Dustin had on the, the nine comments? Everything go good? Just so on number four, uh, just removing change, it should be shed instead of carport or garage. All righty, then, any other comments, anybody? I guess I entertain a motion. So if you, uh, make a motion, go ahead and read the motion and, uh, at least note the, uh, if there's any conditions.
I move the planning commission adopt the finding. Findings stated in the zoning administrator's report for case CU twenty twenty-four dash oh six and forward a recommendation of approval to the governing body regarding the request conditional use to allow oversized shed, storage, shed, or structure workshop in R-one single-family residential district. Subject to the following condition changes stated, additional conditional changes of approval.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Oscar, second, by Mark, uh, to approve the, uh, to recommend approval to the governing body, uh, with the four conditions that Dustin had stated. Um, call them fit?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries you now. The recommendation and the written summary of the public hearing will be considered by the governing body at their eight twenty-two twenty twenty-four meeting to be held at seven P M. in this room.
Okay, we will now go to BZA dash V dash twenty twenty-four dash zero one. Coffee, uh, eight hundred East bench report to allow reduction in required parking. Hi, Richard Wolf moved, planning commission recessed and board of zoning appeals convene. Uh, second.
I'll second.
A motion by Richard Wolf and second by Oscar. To open boarding zoning appeals and and, uh, recess the planning commission. Uh, all favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And now call agenda item seven B, public hearing for case number BZA dash V dash twenty twenty-four dash zero one. Request for the variance to reduce the required parking as stated in zoning regulations. Fifteen point five and C point four in the C-three zoning district. Does any matter, member of the B, uh, devoted zoning appeals wish to abstain from voting under this agenda? Let the record show there are no abstentions. We have forum of five, seven for public hearing. Uh, B, are anybody wish, uh, to report any expertise communications? Let the record show there are no expertise communications. Secretary, secretary has reported that a notice for this public hearing was published in Art Valley News on six thirteen twenty twenty-four and notices were mailed to applicant and thirteen owners of record of real property in the notification area on six ten twenty twenty-four. All of which, uh, is at least twenty days' advance notice is required unless there is evidence contrary. I declare notification requirements have been satisfied for this public hearing. As the first item business, uh, asks zoning administrator Dustin Dalton to present the zoning administrator's report.
We'll get there. Okay. Uh, Bill Caffey requesting a variance to reduce required parking from thirty-two stalls to ten stalls and one ADA stall on the property zoned to C-three commercial district. Jurisdiction, the board has jurisdiction to consider the variance request under the provisions of section fifteen point three of the city of Kichai zoning regulations and as outlined in Kansas statutes annotated twelve dash seven five nine. The board may grant the request when all five conditions as required by the statutes are found to exist. The board shall consider the extent to which the evidence supports the conclusions required by section fifteen point zero five point D point one and demonstrates that the hardship claimed by the applicant is an unnecessary hardship caused by the physical surroundings, plot shape, or topography of the subject property rather than the proposed use being inappropriate for the subject property or in compliance with its surrounding or other mere inconvenience to the applicant. The hardship claimed by the applicant is not solely economic in nature, such as an attempt to avoid expenses related to meaning the otherwise applicable provisions or desire to increase the applicant's profit margin for such development. The requested variance will not diminish the condition or value of other properties in the vicinity or inhibit the rights of others to use their property in a lawful manner and enjoy the benefits gained from such uses. The requested variance will not result in inadequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, create a substantial increase to congestion on public roadways, disproportionately impact public utility system service or capacity, impose a flood or fire hazard, or otherwise endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. The applicant has plans to develop an arts and craft studio or gallery as a private gallery for his hunting trophies. Article seven point three of the Kichai zoning regulations state that an arts and craft studio or gallery require one stall per three hundred square feet of gallery slash display area plus one stall per five hundred square feet of other indoor areas. The building will have approximately nine thousand five hundred seventy-six square feet of display area. Three hundred square feet is thirty-one point nine two or thirty-two parking stalls. Due to the proposed use as a private use, the applicant is requesting a reduction in required parking from thirty-two stalls to ten stalls plus one ADA compliant stall, which cannot be adjusted. Sedu it, or excuse me, section fifteen point five point C point four of the Kichai zoning regulations states that a variance can be granted to the required number of off-street parking spaces and amount of off- off-street loading except for adjustments to ADA requirements. The BZA is authorized to grant a variance to the applicable parking requirements in accordance with the standards outlined in section fifteen point zero five point D of the zoning regulations. Approval of this variance request would allow the applicant to have required parking and a sizable amount of parking should the building be used for other purposes. It will also allow the landscaping that the applicant is requesting, see site plan below. The properties to the north, south, and east are zoned as C-three commercial district. Properties to the west are undeveloped and zoned as R-two multifamily residential district. In twenty eighteen, the subject site was plotted as lots one and two, block A, Kichai Business Park Edition. There has been one on this site. There's been no other actions on this site. Uh, north, uh, C-three, south, C-three, east is C-three, uh, all general commercial. To the east, it is undeveloped, getting ready to be developed. West is R-two multifamily residential, uh, district and undeveloped. Uh, number one, staff analysis. The intended use for this development creates a unique situation for the applicant. The applicant has no use or need for thirty-two parking stalls. Staff believes that ten stalls plus one ADA stall is sufficient should the property change owners or use. Number two, staff does not see the rights of adjacent property owners being adversely affected. Number three, strict application of these, of the regulations would require the applicant to have more parking than necessary and create more stormwater runoff. See parking site plan below. The reduction of required parking will not change the supply of air or light, has no impact on the public streets, fire danger, endangerment of public safety, or reduction or diminishment of property values in the neighborhood. Number five, granting variance will not oppose the spirit or intent of the zoning regulations. The recommendation, should the board of zoning appeals determine that all five conditions necessary to the granting of a variance can be found to exist, then it is the recommendation of the zoning administrator that the variance to reduce the number of parking stalls from thirty-two to ten plus one ADA be granted subject to the following conditions. One, parking that shall comply with provisions of section seven point two C one and two. Parking that shall comply with the design standards of section seven point six. Development and maintenance of the site shall be in conformance with the approved site plan. Attachments. We see the lots here. To the west is the R-two. East, north, and south are all C-three. Zoning map showing the same thing. Uh, future development plan map showing general location of this, of the properties. And site plan, north is going to be to your right. We see these stalls with one ADA on here. And a little bit more detail, the applicant is wanting to put gravel, rock all the way around the building with some trees that will help keep, uh, people from parking on the gravel and or rock. Site photos, we've got site photos to the northeast, south, and west. Does anybody have any questions for me?
The parking area is concrete.
Yes.
Um, the only question I got is on the first one, uh, did you state that right? It says staff believes that ten stalls plus one ADA, uh, so is sufficient should the property change owners' use, you mean, for this use?
For this use.
Yeah.
Um, should, should the property, s- staff believes that if the property does change hands, there's a good chance that they won't need thirty-two stalls for this size of a building. It's not a, it's not a box store or anything else like that. It's to help cover should that property ever change hands or, um, a new owner takes over. They may require that parking, should a new owner come into the picture, they will have to apply for that variance as well and defend why they want just ten. And also depending on the use, we may, as the city, may require them to increase that parking available to customers and citizens.
I mean, that area to
They do.
Expand it.
Yes.
So I would just, I, I think, uh, I would just change, change that first one, that
So I would just, I I think uh I would just stay change that first one then, uh well, we'll change it, I guess, just basically for the for the intended use.
Okay.
So will you one time conditional use then?
It's a variance. Um it runs just kind of with the owner, but once the owner or the use changes, that variance goes away. Um a conditional use will run with the land as long as it stays in compliance.
Thank you, Dustin. Any other question?
Yeah, the only question I have is who and what, how is the gravel gonna be maintained? Make sure that, you know, it's not growing a bunch of weeds and grass and stuff like that.
I'm assuming that the property owner will have somebody out there that takes care of that. Uh this is not the first trophy building he has. He has one down in Texas, I believe. Um he will have the manpower and I've got his contact information. I'm also code enforcement, so I get to play both sides. I can contact him should things start to look unruly. Thanks.
Yep. Is the applicant here for this? If you'd like to say anything, okay. And now move on to public comments. Any public comments on this? Uh here are no further comments. I hereby close the public hearing and we will restrict further conversation to the bench. Uh the board of zoning appeals will now begin deliberations. So we go further. Public comment unless the board of zoning appeals ask a question for clarification. The board of zoning appeals may only grant a variance of the standards of section fifteen uh dot O five dot D of the zoning regulations in KSA twelve dash seven fifty nine uh E R M A. Does the board of zoning appeals find that the requested variance is an authorized variance as only described under section fifteen five C of zoning regulations? If we do. Does the board of zoning appeals find that the question variance meets the standards as listed in section fifteen O five D in KSA twelve seven fifty nine E as follows the variance? Request rises from the condition that meets all the following condition or provisions. Uh you do, unique to the property in question, not ordinarily found in the same zoning district, not created by action or actions of the property owner or applicant. I'd say uh meets all those. Everybody agree? Granted, the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners. I agree with that. Strict application provisions of these regulations for which a variance is requested will constitute an unnecessary that the property owner requested in the application that will work out. The variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morale, or order, convenience, property, or general welfare. Agree? Granted, variance will not be opposed to the general spirit intent of these regulations. Okay, the only thing that I have on these. The only thing I have to add on uh number one is that uh ten stalls, one ADA is sufficient for this use. This, what you put on here?
Yes.
I just put, I just say that's what, oh, I would put on there for like a question. Wait, wait.
Can I?
I mean, it it will go. It it could be, it doesn't fit a future use, but that's, like you said, would be covered uh at that time.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, that's my question. So if somebody bought it, they, is there ground for the remaining stalls to be put?
Yes, to the uh west.
Where the gravel is then? Okay, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, any other deliberations on this? Okay, I would entertain motion.
I move that the board of zoning appeals adopt the findings stated in the zoning administrator's report. For case BZA V twenty twenty four O one, um subject to the following conditions, parking shall comply with the provisions of section seven point two C one dash two. Parking shall comply with the design standards of section seven point six and development and maintenance of the site shall be in conformance with the approved site plan.
I hear a second. Okay, uh motion by Mark Second, uh push the uh to approve. Approve this request with the the position that Dustin actually, any uh discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Both? Motion carries you now. I, Richard Wolfe, move to recess the board of zoning appeals and reconvene the planning commission. I hear a second.
Second.
Second by after, all in favor? Both? Motion carries. Okay, down to unfinished.
Sheriff person, if it's okay, it would, um I would like to go over the case again just to refresh everybody's memory and to you commissioners here.
Yes, and I was already intending that we will, it may be abbreviated, but I'm gonna open the public hearing. I'll give just briefly to, if there's any comments, we're gonna limit the comments and stuff, but.
Okay. All right. Uh the request for a conditional use as an exception to allow a beer, wine, or liquor store for property zoned as the C one arts and business district. You can see it located here, two hundred east Kichai Road. Uh the applicant is requesting a conditional use for a beer, wine, or liquor store on property that's zoned to C one arts and business district. Uh the applicants have planned to have a liquor slash flower shop or coffee shop with the possibility, excuse me, with the possibility of a coffee ice cream shop. The building is planned to be seventy five by a hundred feet or seventy thousand five hundred square feet. The property is thirty six thousand nine hundred eighty two square feet. The property is platted as lot one, block one, the boardwalk edition, and is currently undeveloped. Beer, wine, or liquor store is defined in the zoning regulations as establishments that provide retail sales of packaged alcoholic beverages. A beer, wine, or liquor store is only allowed on properties in the C one arts and business district with conditional use approval. Uh case history, in twenty fifteen, the subject site was platted as lot one, block one, the boardwalk edition. There were three zoning cases heard for this property in twenty fifteen. Uh BZA CU twenty fifteen dash zero two, conditional use request for principal building exceeding the gross maximum size. BZA V dash twenty fifteen dash zero two, variance request for a reduction in total parking spaces and subdivision twenty fifteen dash zero two subdivision case for the replating of the three properties to one lot. Section fourteen point six C of the zoning regulations states, conditional uses approved in accordance with these regulations shall run with the land upon approval. They shall remain in effect without regard to ownership so long as the use remains on the subject property without being significantly altered or destroyed. Section fifteen six B three of the zoning regulations states that variances granted by the board shall be valid for a period not to exceed one hundred eighty days from the hearing date. Both of the previous mentioned cases were heard and approved on June fifteenth, twenty fifteen. However, because no action occurred to construct a proposed use and structure on the property, the previous approvals are null and void. To the north is C one and R one arts and business district, single family residential. South, east, and west are all C one arts and business district. Uh the requested conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan. Page seventeen of the comprehensive comprehensive plan states, build a strong and diverse local economy. Page eighteen states, a key objective for growing Kichai's economy is to promote the development of the arts and business district as the local hub of commercial and economic activity. Page twenty five states, Kichai should provide ample gathering spaces, especially within the arts and business district. The future development plan map depicts the subject property as appropriate for arts and business district, which permits a beer, wine, or liquor store by conditional use and a flower shop by right. It is a staff's recommendation that the request be approved with the following conditions. Beer, wine, or liquor store must comply with the table of uh required off-street parking by land use of section seven point three. The applicant shall provide a revised site plan including building dimensions, setbacks, easements, and an appropriate drainage plan relative to the project and structure before any building permit is submitted. Development and maintenance of the site shall be in conformance with the approved site plan. If the zoning administrator finds that there's a violation of any of the conditions um of the conditional use, the zoning administrator, in addition to enforcing other remedies, may declare the conditional use null and void. This recommendation is based off of the following. One, the properties to this, south, east, and west are zoned and developed as C one. Properties to the north, developed as R one and C one. Two, the request for a conditional use is in conformance with twenty, with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan as discussed in the staff report. Number three, all utilities and public services are provided to the area. Staff does not see an increase in those services. Four, subject site is currently zoned C one, which permits a beer, wine, or liquor store by condition, conditional use approval. Five, the property has been undeveloped around and since the time of plating in twenty fifteen. Staff does not see an issue with C one arts and business district being adjacent to other C one arts and business district and R one single family residential district. The property owners, the property owners to the north have submitted a zoning permit. Uh it was approved to have a fence put up on that property. Uh seven, staff does not anticipate the, that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. Eight, approval of the, this request represents a gain to the public and that it contributes to support economic, economic opportunities in the area. Approval of this application is not anticipated to have significant detrimental impacts to the public health, safety, or welfare. Denial of this application could represent a loss in the use and enjoyment of the applicant's property. Uh, public input, I haven't received any, but there has been, obviously. Aerial map showing the uh two hundred Kichai Road zoning map. Subject property is here. We have R one. All the pink is C one. Location of the property, showing that it is arts and business district. Uh the site plan submitted by the applicant. And site photos. We have north, east, south, and west. Any questions for me? Easy, thank you, Dustin.
All right, so basically he's just gonna build a building and put two, basically two stores.
I, I think the applicant would be able to answer that one better. Um I think that might be an option. I think it might also be an option to bring a building in and place it on the property. I'm not sure what he has decided yet. Uh it's been a while since um him and I have discussed that.
Thank you, Dustin. Before we continue, I got two questions since the planning commission's gone. But anybody wish to abstain from voting on this? There are no abstentions from uh voting on this uh conditional use. Is there any expertise communications anybody's receiving?
Yep.
Uh there's, let the record show no expertise communications we receive. And I'd like to ask the applicant if they would please come up and if there's anything to add.
Are you gonna have a public forum?
Or is that?
We already had a public forum.
Well, you said you're gonna. I will.
Open it at the end?
Open it briefly.
No, I can.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I might open that. Um, thank you, Abby, once again, praying to, and I appreciate, you know, seeing the new members, it's a lot great to hear. Uh as you guys can tell, I'm pretty serious about being able to, if it's the Kichai, out of all the conditional uses, I'm the only one to actually show it out to be able to explain my case and what we're trying to do. Um it's gonna be a location that we will be saying a building, a uh construction that's gonna have several tenants and one would be a liquor store. The other one would be a coffee shop and ice cream parlor slash a flower shop. Um another biggest challenge has been, you know, for the, I guess, last move was eight individuals that spoke. Number four was the fact that, you know, the liquor store, you know, the the morality of the liquor store, how they feel about it. Um I like to point out that I'm looking to increase the value of Kichai. I wouldn't be spending the kind of money I'm looking to spend because, you know, I I think that, just to be said, it would be value for all that's gonna be spending all the money developing the line county. So we wouldn't do it unless we feel very certain after doing our research that it would be, something would be beneficial for, you know, increase of tax dollars and be able to uh increase, you know, our stream of revenue as well. So um anything that values and part of it, we make sure that we have done it to the best of our ability. I know I heard something about people believing that the Kicha was closed, just to kind of give you guys a little bit of background on the greenhouse thing do. It does about one point five to two million dollars in sales, thank you. And we do wholesale and we do retail. When it was originally bought, it was a retail operation. It's increased exponentially and we have some of the biggest events that Kicha has because of what we bring to the picture as far as some of the records, some of the plants. So we've had, the challenge before was the parking and now, like I was saying, well, we didn't know it was in business, but obviously it was understood it was in business because we have so much, so many people from all over the place. And we're talking about, there's uh customers that show up from all over Kansas just to shop at our greenhouses because of the rarity of some of the plants that have. Sure, I know I asked the members in the past to take a tour of our greenhouse to see what they thought about it. Take a tour of the valley location, which I can do as well, so you guys can see, you know, how we run some of our operations. So we seriously take it whenever we're involved in anything. I like to point out also that alcohol is one of the most regulated industries that. I like to point out also that alcohol is one of the most regulated industries that are known. So uh there is so many, which lies, there's a lot of laws, a lot of things that you have to get to even get a license. So we wouldn't be anything that would bring a judgment to the community or to them. We're looking to do something nice on the high end of things and, you know, hopefully uh keep bringing those tax dollars, you know, to the community and bring to bring in a stream of revenue for value, so. Um, questions that I can answer?
Yeah, so I noticed at the other location, Arcanas.
Yes, sir.
Um, you have a liquor store there, you just put in.
I don't own that liquor store, I do, uh consulting.
What's a liquor store?
Thank you.
What's that?
A consultant owns a liquor store, can I do?
So that was actually not part of.
No, no, that's not part of that, I can do. That was a trial model that we had consultant build that I loaned part of my building so people can see concept, you know. Uh, especially for the Kechai, I think was very important to me because that's the one I would like to kind of be part of, thank you. Uh, it's a gift that I'm giving my father as a retirement, he's, you know, worked all his life and I wanted to build something, you know, and um he likes, he's looking to move to Kechai as per this thing. And I wanted to be able to have something for him to retire, you know, I I didn't come from money. So my dad, uh, served all his life and and, you know, now I thought like I was giving back something to my father. So that's been part of my concept behind it, thank you, to be able to have him work at that uh liquor store and no longer have to put in those hard hours, that made it possible for me to be where I am today, thank you, so.
So I guess my question is, how how was that doing?
How is it doing, can you? Um, as far as from the uh financials that I saw, because I mean that consultant shared as far as concept, it's projected to do in its first year about about seven hundred fifty thousand option, right, thank you, so. Uh, any one of you are welcome to see it, it is, it was, it was to test the concept, to be able to see how we can beautify something. Have any of you visited the that location? Okay, you were.
That's what I was wondering, and it was, I think they just opened like, I'm Arcanas, like thirty eight or thirty nine.
What'd you, what'd you think of it? What'd you think of it?
Um, yeah, I mean.
I mean, did it, I mean, because we spent.
You know, they didn't have.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Everything, I think, in there, are you gonna sell flowers in there too?
Yes, sir.
In that place.
Sir. Um, so we will have the 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 bloom store, which is a flower side of it, okay, we're gonna be introducing that as, say true as a concept. But one of the few things that we did with this liquor store was very, we try to carry a very select group of uh item number, uh items. Everything in our liquor store is uh, well, that liquor store is uh signage has been done, thank you. When the consultant, you know, designed it, uh, we also alphabetized everything. In it, as you can see on the shelving, we didn't do traditional bundle shelving, we use hiring shelved knit wire, so we designed ourselves. All of our signage inside the liquor store was custom made, uh, we did it in California. We took, uh, we had somebody take wheelbarrows and then cut them out and then started kind of doing the uh imprinting. Uh, signage, you saw signage as well, thank you, so. Uh, there was quite a bit of money uh spent on it and we're getting a lot of positive feedback from the community. I mean, one of the things that we had was in the area, there was a lot of people who did wishes, they were horse riders, I call it, there was a lot of horse riders. So we installed some things and people can put in their horses and be able to go in there and uh shop for liquor, thank you. So anyway, I'm glad you went to, so you can kind of see what, you know, what that would look like and and how the uh concept was uh set up and, you know, how it's, there was a lot of thought and money spent into it to beautify, obviously, thank you.
Any other questions for them?
Um, in your site plan, you do show the liquor store and the ice cream uh coffee shop. So two separate activity activities within the same uh footprint, correct?
Yes, sir, well, I mean, it's, it, the original thing would be one big building and separate it into those kind of uh environment. Because we, what we're looking to do is taking and landscaping it out a little bit where it it's almost like a walk around, thank you. So you can kind of walk around, have some benches and to deal with some of the, for the new members of the committee, uh, we were thinking of how we're gonna do with drainage, so what we wanna do is build a pond and have water kind of drain into that uh pond area, thank you.
So now, will.
Yes, sir.
Well, well, each of these uh two activities and others that kind of, if I understood you correctly, you can have possibly more uh units, correct?
No, I I think it really, because of the the uh the uh square footage of the of the uh or the plot of land, I think three is pretty much what we, what we can kind of look at, thank you.
Gonna have three. Will there be three separate tenants of that?
No, sir, they're all gonna be for my father.
Say again.
They're all gonna go to my father. They're they're, they're all gonna be gifted to my father.
Okay, so so there'll be one, one tenant in other.
Yes, sir.
That's what I was after to find out.
And on the application, Luis Ramos, the one that you guys saw in the application, is my father, so he's gonna get it. He would have that and then I just help him with the uh 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 concept of it, thank you. So he just, he thought that, you know, he just wanted to have like a, a retirement situation that happens, he's uh turning sixty-three this year.
How long have you owned that lot?
I have owned it for the past, Jesus, I'm gonna say probably five days, it was pre-COVID. Uh, I, when I bought it, uh, and it it was never meant to be, I I never thought of it to be a liquor store. I really just wanted to make sure that I had the ability to kind of put a nurturing factor for the for the greenhouse, thank you. But it really became a a really, a big idea as as my father started going through retirement. That's when I kind of, I had the lot, hadn't really done much with it and uh I just thought that it would be, thought it'd be a little bit better. And I also own the uh house north of the greenhouse as well, thank you, so I have that house. So I thought if I ever needed to maybe expand and put some some trees there, I would come for a conditional use one more time and then just do a tree nursery up in that lot, which is about a acre or so that's uh north, thank you. So I have the Kechai, the house, north of me is, I mean, it's the greenhouse, that property, north of me is a half, south of me is that, that lot.
So you're gonna build a seventy-five hundred square foot building?
A seventy-five square, yeah, yes, that would be the.
What's that?
Right, on that, on that piece of land, that would be, but that was not the original intent, uh, when I first bought the lot, thank you. It was gonna be more of a uh tree nursery.
So you're talking about a liquor store, ice cream, coffee shop.
Yes, sir.
And flower?
Yeah, uh, well, the 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 flowers would go in with with the uh uh the ice cream parlor or the coffee shop, thank you. Because uh if you guys visit the greenhouse, we do a lot of plants, valley stores mainline of business is actually fresh cut flowers, we bring flowers from all over the world, thank you. Uh, so traditional uh flower shops, uh actually buy flowers from valleys, so we bring the flowers from all over, we redistribute them, thank you. So it would be a uh, not so much a traditional flower, but people would have the ability to buy bouquets of flowers and and take home in general, thank you.
Or it could be a seventy-five hundred square foot liquor store.
Philip, it will, uh, and the the reason I say no, man, can you, because the amount of inventory that that would take, it wouldn't be a uh, it wouldn't be a hard disaster of inventory. When you have that kind of inventory, you're looking at maybe four and a half million dollars of inventory to keep it kind of full, so. You have to kind of uh bring it back and one of the things that we have found.
Yeah, but the question is, I just didn't know if you're a liquor store and then maybe this, then maybe that, it could just be a liquor store.
That it could be just, no, because we're gonna develop several tenants, it would not be efficient to book, to construct a building that big and just only have a liquor store. It wouldn't be able to pay for itself, or there was.
I think you see, it's not, there's nothing confining you to do, you could do that.
What's that, like?
Legally, you could do that, just make it liquor.
Just make a, oh, yeah, I mean, I guess there's a possibility for for uh anything, but it would not be the intent because liquor has a very, very, very small margin, thank you. To get that building to pay for itself, it has to be additional different uses. I mean, liquor carries about a seventeen to eighteen percent gross margin, you can't pay the building back, which is, it's not liquor, thank you. That would be the logic of doing something besides liquor. That's why you notice that liquor store, they don't just carry liquor, they carry chips, they try to bring all these different items to bring up their gross margin, kind of do.
Any other questions for Dustin? Uh, no. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm not, we're not gonna go through the same over here, but what I'm going to do is read the minutes. So that the new members and Oscar, he wasn't here at the last hearing. Can know, you know, what was said there. Uh, Ginger Clevenger uh stated, uh, she's just west of the liquor store. There is a schoolhouse that sells liquor, what? Oh, okay, she's talking over there. The old schoolhouse sells liquor, Jump Start sells beer, doesn't feel like it's a need for a liquor store. If allowed, will there be a privacy fence on the west side of the property? So she's concerned, she's got a residence next door and whether she, they're gonna be required to put private uh screening between the the commercial and a residential. Now, C one allows both residential and commercial, but typically you require a screening between a residential use and commercial. Julian Harris, uh, she kinda uh made comments here. Um, she said it was not the right business fit for your location. Um, and she might, pretty much covered everything earlier, her comments. Arnold Thomas stated, he likes old schoolhouse, school tap house, uh, except for traffic, parking and drainage. Stated, he grew up in Kechai and Kechai is not Kechai anywhere, it's growing too fast, you don't see kids around, uh, run around anymore. Need food, not good. Doug Whedon, uh, Cheyenne Court, uh, raised with the others, likes the small town feel, doesn't see the liquor store as a walkable community. The comprehensive plan talks about uh a walkable community and so where you have these little shops, I I think it comes from the uh all the little antique shops we had, you know, you're in an outfit within walking distance of each other. Rebecca Hatch was opposed, started, uh, or stated, uh, studies show alcohol stores add to violent crime rates per John Hopkins. Uh, she doesn't see people walking to get liquor, it doesn't add diversity of value. She's opposing, opposed to paying for someone else's drainage and I'll have to tell you that we talked about the drainage. The drainage will be covered separately from this, this is, if this is approved, he's still gotta go through uh site plan and uh get approval from the city engineer, you know, to, for the drainage plan and all that. So that's not something that we're um considering in this, this hearing. Said Main Street should add diversity to the business. Uh, Blaine Harris, raised with the others, liquor store does not fit character of Kechai, residents would not have to put in screening if liquor store was not going yet. State staff are not considering the negative impacts of increased crime due to uh Art City's entertainment district. I guess he's talking about casinos, liquor store, uh, sports, economic development. C one doesn't allow multi-tenant. Well, we are looking to change that, so. Uh, Carlos said, the uh stated that liquor store does not have a negative impact, it will be walkable with upper echelon of wines similar quality and really striving form. And I guess what was said earlier, now, very briefly, if there's something that I missed there, you're welcome to accept the podium. I just want you to take a minute.
Okay, that's fine, that's all I need. Doug Whedon, W E D A N, three nine two, the Cheyenne Court. A brief comment was made last time that only a handful of people spoke up and said no, from a particular gentleman on the panel. Kind of slammed us for saying no, there's a slight reference tonight, only four more people showed up. My question is, don't kick the twelve to the curb, did anybody get any responses on positive? And I heard no twice, so you had twelve that said no, we're getting slammed and nobody spoke up and said, yes, we should do it. Secondly, um, I'm still waiting for, um, you said there was no negative impact, no study was done on that, that's just somebody's opinion, I guess. No negative impact. And one last thing, there's more important things in a small community, ability families, more important things in taxes. You get all the taxes, what what are you gonna lose from that? You can gain some things, but think about it, there's more important things than money, but this isn't all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, fine, where?
Vaughn Roads, two twenty-nine North Oliver. I also drove by their other liquor store over here and they have your typical liquor store. Banners out by the street and a twelve-foot-high uh blow-up guy with his arm going and so forth. I would say if for some reason you guys decide to can do this conditional use, that you put a conditional use restriction on it, that there are no outside temporary banner signs or anything else. They're allowed one permanent sign that can have lettering that changes or electronic, whatever. But no banners and stuff out by the street, no outs, no banners or anything on the outside of the building and no banners in the window that cover more than fifty percent of the window. And the other thing, question I have for him is, is the liquor store a killer on this deal? I don't see, liquor stores don't make much money, why, why are we going to all this trouble if, you know, I don't see the purpose for it. And also that the whole liquor store industry is one lawmaker in Topeka away from being almost obsolete when Walmart and Dylan's finally get somebody to allow them to sell there. Thank you.
Blaine Harris, one oh nine West Chippewa. Um, yes, I did last time make a comment about the C one, um, where you can't have multi-tenant, commercial in C one. I don't see how you can approve this if you don't have the the zoning in place to even make the conditional use. So until that's done, I don't think this can, this can happen. And secondly, I do second what Doug had said about, you have a small business owner who doesn't live in Kechai that's trying to elevate himself by saying, the other people tonight that have cases didn't show up, but I did to speak about it. That just shows again that he cares only about himself and his father, obviously. But I don't think he cares about really the the rest of Kechai, so that's just my opinion, thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny Harris, one oh nine West Chippewa. So it was stated at the hearing in May, Dustin brought it forward, that the original application was for a floral shop. And the planning commission did not ask the applicant why he changed his original application from a floral shop to what he's put forward. And again, I asked that if you do prove this for some reason, you put the condition that this, the liquor store cannot be more than so much space in the building because he's not applying for a coffee and ice cream shop permit. That's not what he's applying for, he's applying for a conditional use permit for a liquor store. That's really, that's all that's before you, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll, I will close the public hearing and do no further com- comment from the public unless there's a direct question for the public. Do we have any, any other questions for anybody who we, who will be deliberating? I have one for, I, it just, uh, the applicant, if you could talk to, uh, why, why the liquor store, I guess. I'm just curious, he said it was kind of.
Oh, uh, very easy, uh, most of the time, you get to stand there, uh, like I said, my father's sixty-two years old, not in great health, so he can, he's able to stand there, help people out without having to do much, uh, moving. Most of these, uh, vendors, uh, unload, put the stuff up in the fridges for, for you, thank you. So, so it's really just kind of, you, you stand there giving something, something to do, and, uh, so it's not, it's not very hard work. So that's the main purpose, yeah. And the original thing was a, uh, liquor store, that's why his name was on the application. So it was never, it never started, and Dustin confirmed by, it never started as a, I said, we're gonna add these flower shop with eggs, but we started with a conversation with liquor, with these two gentlemen, and they made it sound like it was something that could happen here, so. And I already owned the property. So this conversation goes back about, what did I say, a year ago? Year and a half ago?
About a year.
About a year, so that we, we've been working together, with something to do, so.
Uh, I noticed again on the site plan, which isn't entirely clear, but is there a proposed drive-through on the liquor store side?
Can have one, after we found out, uh, Dustin, uh, did the research, thank you, because we, like I said, we've been working together, kind of do. Can't have drive-through, it's, uh, it, it goes against, uh, city convenants, or.
Yeah, it's not, drive-throughs are not allowed in C one?
We didn't know that, what we did, what we submitted, we didn't know that.
Full stop.
And it was, the drive-through was for the, uh, coffee shop.
So the drive-through on the coffee shop would still show on this on C nine?
Yeah, you can't have a drive-through in the city of Ketchikan, so that's what we found out, cause, I mean, both Dustin, we're both new to this thing, so. So we, so we do the financing, my company, would be some of the financing, thank you, so, Valley's my organization, thank you, so. Uh, but yes, we're gonna throw, I mean, we're not gonna just do it for, we're not gonna put a shed up there, I mean, we're gonna throw more, about a million plus on the, and with construction going up, I think the millions is actually a little bit on the short side, we're gonna throw a lot more than that.
I guess it's a catch twenty-two, cause we, we need to grow. Paper stuff. And I don't think anybody complained, but with arts and crafts and flowers.
No, I did, but it's.
I'm just talking out loud.
Right, no, look, if I, if I was something that felt like it could, hey, it has to be something I feel like. And again, I'm gonna be at the delivery, that's probably the, if I, whether I'm approving or not, it's, I have to be able to do something I know my father can physically do, so. That's something that he.
So you, so you're talking about physically good, but you're wanting to put ice cream and flowers in there, how is he gonna be able to do that?
Mom, mom's gonna be able to help him, thank you. So mom's gonna be doing, uh, well, mom wants to do the coffee side, thank you, and, and dad wants to be kind of like the liquor, he's always got, you, you know, since I was a kid, he's kind of collected bottles, okay, kind of, you never had a, I was never in an abusive home shape or had any problem with substance, could be, he just liked the shapes of, of bottles, and, and, and he would be one of those guys that likes to read about, likes to read about wine, he's like to read, you know, about the different parts, I mean, when, uh, I don't know, when Total Wine came up, he was really kind of, really loved the store, and he just kind of, uh, as they were coming on, well, he said, gosh, it'd be amazing if we could have something like this, and, and, uh, so, yes, it's, it's, he just has a passion to learn about it, so, thank you, which, we're really, thank you, till, I guess I shouldn't have known when he was collecting, cause he just likes the shapes of bottles and things he do, so.
For my clarification, you are gonna have a wall dividing the beer and wine spirits?
Yes.
And coffee shop and ice?
Yes, uh, we definitely don't wanna have children inside the liquor store.
Right.
I mean, number one, number two, it's by law, you have to do it that way, thank you, you cannot sell more than twenty percent of your items, thank you. So ag- again, this, this industry is heavily regulated, it's not something that, that anybody, no joke, well, I'm gonna set up and I'm gonna tear my community if I set up a liquor store, it's very regulated. You cannot, just to kind, to have a liquor list, you cannot be a felon. You cannot employ people who are felons to have a liquor store. By law, I mean, and if you, they catch you employing felons, they take your liquor license and you can do jail time, it's a serious business, it's not, it's not something that anybody can just jump up and do it, I mean, they, they put the screws in, it's very, very regulated, thank you. And I think the statistic came from Dustin, thank you, or, uh, and, and don't, I don't wanna put words in my mouth, but you even shared, I didn't know this, how, how many of these tax dollars that build parks come from liquor store? I mean, they, it's like thirty to thirty-five percent of the tax dollars signed to liquor go straight to the parks, by law, so.
They just take parks.
Parks, uh-huh, there's something I, I, I heard a statistic, and.
It's like state parks, though.
Uh, I, I don't know with parks, but I, I heard a statistic, I, I didn't even know about it, thank you. But as, you know, as, as my father's been educating himself on it, thank you, and, and it's, it's not easy, thank you, and I'm glad, I'm glad that there's a lot of regulation to it, personally. I'm glad that you cannot have felony and, and, and run it, I'm glad that if you sell to minor, it's jail time, thank you, it's, it's a big deal. I mean, these guys take it seriously, heavily policed, and, uh, it's, you can't just go out there and get a liquor license, like, okay, thank you, so.
Okay, any other questions for?
Well, I guess my whole point was the seventy-five hundred square foot building, he could finish the three thousand square foot and do nothing but the forty-five hundred ever. So wanting to do something, actually doing it are two different things, I guess, is the point.
I mean, you basically, if we approve this, you're approving a liquor store on that, right?
Right.
I mean, everything else is, you're right with, you're right, that's true. Anything else? Thank you. Okay, so now we deliberate, and this is where we were, we were at this point last time. We're almost around this time. So, the, so Dustin kind of, he went to and, and had comments for these nine, uh, or actually eight items that we deliberated on. And I guess there's just a couple here that, um, I think something should be added. The number one, the zoning uses and character of the neighborhood, the properties to the southeast-west. Our zone and developed a C one arts business district, properties to the north. Our zone developed as, uh, our one single-family residential district and C one arts and business. I mean, I agree with it, there's nothing to change here. Number two, uh, consistently with comprehensive plan vision and character of the city of Ketchikan. Uh, I do think that this, uh, is not directly, um, you know, it may, it doesn't follow, it's, um, to the, to the letter, basically, the downtown area was for arts and business, uh, district, so. I'm not exactly sure that it, uh, that it's in conformance with the Concrance Plan. It's, uh, uh, we talked about walkability, most people go to a liquor store, they're not walking, whether it could be so. Walking for their, uh, they're probably driving.
Cause they can't drive.
Driving, well, they don't usually come and buy liquor, treat it out for hours.
Richard, I'd say that the, um, in, in relationship to number two, is it, it's on the far end of, of, of being consistent with the plan. It's a business, we want business, um, but is it truly compatible with what's, uh, what the ideal is for the, the community? And, and that, that the community has expressed, even more importantly, so that, I have, I have some concern there.
So I have a question, if we put this in there, if we decide to do it, can we make him make, do it just like what's on here? Where the, seven, you know, where the ice cream coffee shops on one side, liquor stores on the other? You can't.
You, it's basically, all this is asking is, we approve a liquor store.
But, but what I'm saying is, if he doesn't do it the way that it's, well, this piece of paper, then it's null and void, can we do that? I don't think so.
It's, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. Building plans change, as I'm sure you, you know.
I understand that.
Right, but like he had said, like, uh, what Carlos had said earlier, is there has to be a divider between the liquor store and the other businesses.
I, I understand that.
I'm not picking up what you're putting down, then.
What I'm saying is, is, he's got seventy-five foot on one side and a hundred foot on the other side, on this, this right here.
Uh-huh, yep.
So if we agree to do this, he has to do it that way, or it's null and void.
You, you, I, I believe you can, I believe you can make that restriction, make that one of the conditions.
So he can't do the whole thing.
I think to answer your question, you can li- I think you can limit the square footage that you're approving for the liquor store in that building, whatever else he puts on the other side, if, if he, he wouldn't have to come here tonight if he wanted to put a flower shop or coffee shop in, because it fits in the zoning, he doesn't need a conditional use for that.
But, but I think that's what everybody's concerned is, is he's gonna make that whole building like the huge liquor store over there on Greenwood's that everybody's been talking about.
Sure.
I think that's everybody's concern, from what I'm hearing.
Or just making the three thousand square foot park a liquor store, leaving the forty-five hundred vacant. Be- because we, we made him build a seventy-five hundred square foot building.
But he could do that.
That's what I'm saying.
But then somebody would come in and do something with it, hopefully. And that's where, you know, go.
That's where the second little problem occurs, and that if somebody else comes to take over that vacant area, that's a multi-tenant use, and that's not allowed. That's why he has to stay with a single-tenant activity, where he can't have the conditional use.
No, okay, so it was, it was stated that, how, how can we approve this, well, we can approve this, cause we're only approving a liquor store. That's all we're approving.
Yep, the, the.
Okay, the multi-tenant, we're not approving. Later, uh, we're trying to change the zoning regulations, cause that's, that's a use that we want to put perceived, what's your, he wants to.
Oh, I, I just wanted to approach, uh, for my, thank you, but please, I mean, put twenty-five hundred square feet as a conditional use, I would be totally, please, put it just a, I mean, put twenty-five hundred square feet as a conditional use and write it in there, and problem solved, I mean, hey, if it goes two hundred and, I don't know, I mean, two thousand five hundred and one, you're out for the game, thank you. Just to prove how I, it's important to me, thank you, just to keep it as small as possible, I can, I mean, I was starting to just writing that in the language, thank you, just. Two thousand five hundred and one, out, thank you.
It shows that we change zoning first, if, do a conditional use for zoning instead of approving a liquor store then?
Well, yeah, no, 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 because he's asking for a condition, it has nothing to do, uh, with proving a, a.
We're not proving nothing other than, can he put a liquor store in there?
So, I mean, you restrict the, uh.
Later, we can do all that other stuff, but he's saying we can restrict the size of, maybe, he's not, not opposed to it. And then that way, we don't have to worry about him putting in that huge liquor store, he, he, but he says he's gonna do it.
And so, um, back to Mark, what you said, you said it was a far end of the comprehensive plan, and you said, what, what was the rest of that?
Well, that, that, if, if it's quote the definition of a business that's allowable, but it's at the far end of, of kind of that.
What you want from the.
Yeah, and it doesn't, to me, it doesn't, uh, fit into that area if we're really truly desiring to have a artsy community, and.
So, um, yeah, I wouldn't say for number two, if we're gonna just add in there that it's at the far end of the comprehensive, comprehensive plan, it doesn't, doesn't really fit the arts and business district. And then, uh, number three was adequacy of utilities and roadways, that's all, that's all good. Suitability of subject property use, which has been restricted, uh, subject sites currently zone C one arts business district, which prevents, uh, what you just said, that it promotes the conditional use, but again, I'd say that, uh, it's not necessarily business that would fit. Uh, arts. Uh, arts business. Anybody have a problem putting that in? Okay. Uh, length of time it was, uh, has remained vacant, I don't have a problem with that. Compatibility of opposed, opposed district classification with nearby properties. Yeah, no, the, I don't see no problem with that, except I do think as a condition, if, if you guys want to prove this, that they required, uh, to put screening between the actual residential use and the commercial.